Well, it's it's closer than that.
Savela Street is on the developer this side of grade school, not where the new go.
So it's it's the property that's immediately it's it's southeast of Arts Fox Fox Elementary.
I think I'm here.
This is this is open field.
Yes. Yeah, the old high school is to the south and to the west. So this is.
This is what he was talking about.
I'll take back.
And that's it.
So there's there's things to make right. So first is.
These ones are now being established.
Right, so so looking at this.
We are now gonna start the meeting.
So where it says looking south, that's where the subdivision is. This is for the reason. So this proposal is this property here. Not this property here, this property they wanna take from R one to R two. Yeah, there's there should be two different. No, no, this is the subdivision. This is the reason.
This is.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay, the thirty one lot subdivision.
Yes, sir. Yeah, so.
And this is general.
Wait, we are way back here in the horizon.
No, it makes sense.
Yeah, there's A and B, so A is subdivision.
I didn't call you.
Oh. The owners of those developed, so that's where the houses are. So it's it's. Yep, so this is the Catholic Charities subdivision with the park here, so that's just the owners of those lots.
Sorry.
Call me in order at what him six oh two, six oh two, beginning of the meeting, okay? Verizon, congratulations, please.
Congratulations to Vlad, United States of America.
Okay, it says. Not needed a roll call. Uh, yes, it'll be a woman assignments first, please, and then followed by the roll call.
Few questions on the last agenda.
On February twenty. Go ahead and call roll call now, planning commissioner Jason Morrow. Here, planning commissioner Stephen Smith. Planning commissioner Gregory. By commission, Mr. Adams. Everyone's, uh, planning commissioner Sandra Davis.
Here.
Everyone is present. We have motion to approve the minutes from the February twentieth meeting.
I moved away, approve the meeting, the minutes for February twenty.
Moved in second if the minutes be passed. Steve Smith moved Jane down the second. Your own papers say hi.
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 Now, we have two public hearings here. The uh, new beginning subdivision and foresight result. You wanna take over from here.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, my name is Byron Gomes, I work with Yakima Valley Conference of Governments, I am your contracted planner and prepared the staff report. Um, for these hearings this evening. Um, the first one, as you mentioned, is new beginning preliminary plat, it is a thirty one lot subdivision. It's proposed between East Euclid Road and High School Road. It is southeast of Arts Fox Elementary School and northeast of the old Mapton High School. Um, the zoning designation, the the future line is designation is residential and the zoning district that the properties within is our one single family residential. Uh, the the thirty one lots proposed, the lot sizes range from approximately sixty six hundred square feet to seventy nine hundred square feet. Um, the the subdivision proposes to extend Sevilla, George and Skillstad Street to the east. And there'll be a new uh, street running north south that's proposed, Herrera Street. Um, city water and sewer will be serving this development. Um, the the sidewalks that are existing on Sevilla, George and Skillset Streets will be extended to the new Herrera Street. And then there will be sidewalk on the west side of Herrera Street to connect it.
Use the west side.
Yes, yeah, so so the the. Property is unique in that high school road, it's where it kinda has that those two ninety degree turns. And the the idea is that the Herrera Street will connect Euclid Road to High School Road. But how those right of ways line up, there's going to be additional right of way that'll be needed on the eastern property when that develops. So in order for things to be aligned, um, Mr. Her, that the applicant is designating partial right of way and building a half street, if you will. So it will allow for traffic.
I I thought it said no uh, entrance onto Euclid or no or High School Road.
That's for the the lots that are being proposed, so there aren't going to be driveways that enter onto those streets, the driveways will be entering to the interior of the subdivision. That's that's the.
So they're gonna houses on both sides of that Herrera Street, yeah?
Um, eventually, I would I would believe so. But but this subdivision is only for the western side of Herrera, the proposed Herrera Street. Um. And then with with similarly to the uh, Geno's Paradise subdivision, there is a request of variance to to remove the requirement for alleyways from subdivision.
Yes, but we talked about that last meeting.
We did, but um, because it's still in the codes, each individual application needs to have that included until that is changed in the code, and and that's forthcoming.
So what kind of action do we need to take on that?
So so the the process for the um, open record public hearing this evening is for the subdivision and the variance. So the planning commission would need to make a motion for a recommendation to approve, approve of modifications or deny. Oh, the Genoa's is said and done, this is purely a new beginning, I was just using it as a frame of reference.
Yeah, but that's in the.
Yes.
Right.
Yeah, the council.
Do what they need to.
Do the.
Both of them, I think.
Yeah, the 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 subdivision and the variance, those both need action.
If you say a lack of alleys, what what? Does that mean that service and emergency vehicles could access the house only from the front?
Right. Right, and and so the the development pattern, the existing s- the development, that was the Catholic Charity subdivision, does not have any alleyways. Um, so it it. Is something, it's a design feature that's not being included in subdivisions anymore, generally through throughout the valley and and a lot of developments I'm seeing in all the cities.
How about sidewalk?
Sidewalks, so where there are existing sidewalks on those streets, they're going to be extended on the same side of it.
West side of Herrera.
Yes, and on the west side of Herrera.
Okay, now, how many homes are we talking about on the west side of Herrera?
Uh, a total, so there'll be a total of thirty one lots, so there'll be thirty one homes.
On the whole thing.
On the whole thing.
When it.
It what, once it's completely built out, yes. Yeah, and and if you look at the preliminary plat, it is broken up into three phases. Where um, it's proposed that Sevilla Street is phase one, George Street is phase two, and Skillstad Street is phase three.
What um? Value would each of the houses be? What are they looking for, mini mansions or standard houses or?
That that I don't know, um, with the the size of the lots, I would imagine that the homes will intended to be market rate homes to steal.
Mr. Her, over here.
He is.
Okay, what answer that question, sir?
Yeah, we're just trying to build regular houses, affordable housing for.
So the community.
Yeah, so the community could throw. You know, nothing too fancy or even happen, maybe house, that would just be kinda ridiculous compared to everything else.
Okay, thank you.
So we look at a two hundred fifty grand, three hundred fifty grand houses?
Yes, around there, that's what the the most expensive house that I know that's sold here in Mapton has been for three thirty.
Yeah, but do we have comp to comparison to what you guys are gonna wanna build? Uh, or is it just a price that you guys are actually setting yourselves?
Well, we're we're, we haven't designed a house yet because we've been in this process for a long time, so we're just trying to get it through approval. And then we'll see, you know, make something that's affordable to the community.
So right now it's just up in the air.
The price range, well, yes.
This this process is just to create the lots.
Yeah. And these roads are gonna tie into the existing roads that are already there.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Other than, there're not gonna be no alleys because they're back to back.
Right.
Okay.
I mean.
Is is there any way? Of building a sidewalk along here for the kids? For easy access to and from school buildings?
And uh, eventually in the future, Herrera Street will connect to High School Road, you know, it'll go all the way through. Um, it didn't make sense to do that at this time because there need to be improvements made to High School Road, and that was outside of the scope of this subdivision. So when the property further to the east gets developed, there'll likely be an examination of the transportation impacts from continued development. And it it. What would likely happen is that that intersection on Herrera Street and High School Road would end up on the city's transportation improvement program to improve. That intersection to make it um, a safe intersection.
You see, the reason I'm asking is because I don't think buses are gonna be going through there to pick up students. Because it's so, it's too close to the school. So would it be uh? Beneficial to put a sidewalk between the houses and the little park that's pre-existing already?
Well, there's already houses, you would have to look through someone's property.
No, right here, there's a park.
Yeah, but that will maybe for two streets.
It's eighth street Herrera Street. I'm sorry? It it's listed as eighth street.
On the drawing. This this here is Herrera Street. Sneak eye.
Okay.
These the the shaded, the darker shaded is the.
It's on the west of that.
So this is. So here's Euclid, here's Arts Fox. Everything, here's next row, so eventually this will connect down, you know, they're dedicating right of way, but they're not building the roadway to High School Road because it's a dangerous.
Because it's this same example of.
North, south.
No.
East, west.
The buses don't go to this.
Right, but it's east Euclid, right, so it's up, it's to the north, right, so here's the north area, so north is up, so north is here, facing this way, so.
They're great schools right here.
So if you look at, this is north. So then this is east west. So it's 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 a line like that, like this.
West.
West, so it's, yeah, it's this large amount. So, yes. So here's Euclid. Yeah, so you can see the right of way when.
Well, no.
I see that there's an existing irrigation line here, will will these lots have uh, access to irrigation water?
I think that I the other half, I don't know if they, I think the other half has irrigation water, so we would just continue connecting, so.
Uh, I, the reason I'm saying that is is that uh, the the water system sometimes gets, maybe Ruben can fill it in on that, but. Sometimes we don't have adequate water supplies for. But while we do, but I don't know if we can. Put too much more pressure on it. Ruben.
Here's here's what, here's what we're having now, as far as I, you know, from what I know. Right now, we have a little over six hundred hookups throughout the city for water today, for regular city water. With an additional thirty one houses. Plus another twenty one houses across the street. Plus, if he gets approved for his apartments of the of the north side of the of the grade school. We're gonna be well over seven hundred hookups, if not close to eight.
Okay.
We don't, right now, I don't think we have the water pressure for that many more units. It's because right now, there's times during the summer where our water pressure goes barely above twenty PSI. And that's just for what we have right now.
There's there's a puzzle in the works to do a a well on the one that's to the north of the grade school. That are you with that group, sir?
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, you.
I think it's.
They've already planned for new well?
No.
It's a negotiation right now.
I think they're planning for a test well.
Yeah.
I believe it's what it is, would be a test well, so.
They don't even know where they're gonna, where they're gonna do that at.
So it would be the northeast corner behind the grade school is what I believe, correct?
Is the city doing anything about the water situation?
You know, to be honest with you Jim, right now, they're really not doing a whole lot. It's just back and forth.
So so with this preliminary plat beginning for. What we have in front of us, where are the water hookups gonna start for? The houses, oh, so it says um, by Susanna Diaz's house, and then we have, it looks like Free Colbert Trade or whatever that is, wh- where are they gonna tie in for these houses? Or is it gonna continue from lot thirty and lot twenty one over water and sewer over to there as well, so that's.
So wat- water and sewer would be installed in the streets.
Okay.
And then there would be the delivery lines going from the mains and the streets to the individual lots.
So then over at lot one, where Susanna Diaz, whether is that where, I guess I'm wondering the black little boxes there?
I'm not sure, I don't know if that's a uh. Uh, surveying thing.
Okay, I was, yeah, I was curious where where they plan in ultimately tying in, if they're going down the streets, then it's, you know, they're not trying to tie in off anybody's property or nothing, that's what I'm getting at.
I I think that Lucy Diaz owns the house right here. And I think that she's already checked on.
So it does show. Part because if nothing's color coded, I think, but these, um, see these lines here, it's an eight inch water line and an eight inch sewer line.
Okay, so they're the those, but they, so they won't come out of somebody's property along these lines?
No, they're they're all within, all within the roads.
Yeah, so I said, there was just, there was no real, and so I was like.
Yeah, and it looks like the sewer is where the red, where the. The black shots are, so the sewer's probably gonna be flowing this way. And then it looks like the water line is getting installed in Herrera as well. And it's, the the sewer line probably isn't going to be looped until development continues further to that east.
So there's gonna be no encroachment on anybody's property, I think is the the biggest concern? Where they have to, you know, take out trees or anything like that?
The the only thing is if there's um, something within, so it's an irrigation and utility easement, so if there's a need to go into the easement.
Yeah.
Then if there's trees or vegetation within the easement, then that those would likely need to be disturbed.
As long as, so if it's not an easement, then whoever would have to, if there is, then they would like replace whatever they have to kind of.
Right.
Okay.
I lost my train of thought. Well, but anyway. You're gonna be well over. If this gentleman here is talking about apartments. Two stories. So you're gonna have.
Two or three. Two stories buildings here. I'm worth three.
Oh, you mean this, you mean uh, behind the grade school?
On the north side of the grade school.
Yeah.
That's where this gentleman is hoping to build apartments. So now you're looking at well over seven hundred connections for city water. I don't know if Mapton can sustain that. So without fixing the problem that they have right now.
One of the reasons I brought it up, because I think this, this should have been dealt with quite a while.
So Gray, Gray and Osborne indicated that there are, there's capacity in the water system for a hundred and thirty connections as we sit and talk right now. So between Geno's Paradise is twenty one and New Beginning is thirty one, that still leaves about seventy connections to the water system. And with the exploration of potential well site. And on the foresight property, that if if that comes to fruition, it would provide additional capacity in water system.
You know what, gentlemen, don't get me wrong, don't get me wrong, I don't have a problem with Mapton growing bigger, I I don't have a problem with that. I myself, I won't have very much longer anyway here in town, I'm probably gonna be gone in the next fifteen, twenty years. You know, but as far as growth in Mapton, I don't have a problem with it at all. If anything is gonna bring revenue to the town, which is a positive thing, and and I hope that happens. But my issue is right now is the water situation. We. We we often.
Ruben, let me say something, okay?
Go ahead.
You're too darn angry to only be fifteen or twenty years.
No. But my my situation is. If are people gonna be willing to rent and buy these homes with the water issue that we have right now? If I was, if I was from out of town. And I, you know, these houses are going up for a reasonable price. I don't know if I would make that move, my, this this is me personally, just because of what's going on with the water issue.
I think, I think.
I'm sure, I'm sure.
Can handle domestic supply, but I don't know if we can have much yard use.
Jerry?
That's why I'm concerned if they have irrigation.
One of the wells responsible for.
It's only gonna be used for.
At the moment, it's just one specific hill that's producing high amounts of sulfur, along with a few other minerals causing that. Test well coming in.
Can't we? Yeah.
Yes.
Make it better?
We are, we're in progress to wells right now. Kind of on set with uh, chlorine and a few other things that Public Works is doing to.
Right now, Mr. Adams, I think the city to do, this is my personal opinion because I've done some research. Right now, the best thing for the city to do to kind of solve this issue is is look into uh. To uh. Hydrogen. To break up the calcium that's built up on these pumps and on these screens. And then you go into to this next phase, which is caused, which is called piggy. Which also does the same thing, and that will clear up the smell. And everything should be fine. If it doesn't, then your next option would be to look for another place for a new well. But it's gotta be, that well would have to be a deep well, not a shallow well, because of the aquifers. You know, you would wanna go deeper. Because then that way you don't get as much sand or as much debris built up. Because it is hard water, there is a lot of magnesium in in our water.
At the last city council, they did spoke about doing test wells with uh, within this foresight.
Yeah.
So they're they're in progress of doing that or?
Then then there is progress.
But there is progress for.
I'm, I'm saying about that, about that project, you're looking at a three million dollar project. And I don't know if Mapton can afford that, even if they get grants, Mapton would still have to pay some of the costs on that. So what I'm saying is, instead of going big, start small and hope that you can fix a problem before you spend too much money. And if this fixes the problem, then you say.
You mean that, that.
But that's something that, that's something that. The mayor. Has to decide on. And everybody's gotta come to an agreement with it. Because right now ain't nobody coming up with an agreement on nothing. And like you say, I don't have a problem with these houses, and I don't think the people here do. But they will tell you, the problem with this is that it's the water issue. And are people gonna wanna buy, invest into a home that could be, but you know, the only home that they buy for the rest of their lives? And deal with this issue every year, in, you know, year in, year out.
That that um, mechanical or chemical. Issue where they take that smelling stuff out of the water, how expensive is that?
I would have to look into that, but it's not, it's not near as much as what they're wanting to do with that test, with that test well.
Does that mean that all the wells could be turned on? And clean, but then the water can be.
Right, right now, the main issue is well over five. That's the main issues, well over five.
There's currently.
I do, I do believe that there's two separate issues though, because the city does need to find additional. Acid. But there's the water quality issue. Think Gray and Osborne. The the whatever test facility. And I, I think both those things are moving together, or moving more, they're not necessarily linked to each other though.
Right now, the tests that are being done as far as the water quality, they say it's drinkable. It's not so much, it's not so much that it's drinkable, it's the smell of it.
That's why they're doing the test wells.
But they don't even know, they don't even know when that's gonna start. The test wells, that that's still up in the air.
You heard the water.
I don't.
I do, and I've done it for years.
May maybe, but yeah, and and the worst happens, first thing in the morning. And and you can smell it throughout the day, but it's worse than the morning.
That start, huh?
Now, our water really is checked pretty thoroughly by the county once a month. And it's not dangerous.
Who checks it?
What?
Who checks the water once a month?
The city has to send the vital water to the county once a month.
They don't do that.
Oh, I'm sure they do.
No, they don't.
Well, then from the breaking the law, then.
Well, yeah, they are. And there's record, there's that the water has to be tested on a regular basis. There should be, there should be, if I'm not mistaken, it's either six or ten homes. That should be getting uh, filling up little bottle, little bottles to take in to get tested throughout the whole town. But they're not always tested at those homes, there's been times where they tested out of the same faucet, two or three times. They fill up the little, the little containers, straight down in the same faucet.
It is being tested then?
Yeah, but it should be tested throughout the town because every town is different, but they don't test it on a regular basis.
That's probably something that should be checked on because I think that would be, it should be.
Yeah, it it should be because it's against the law if it isn't.
Gentlemen that are part of this uh, request, you have anything you need to say to us?
Well, to be honest, I feel that's a different issue that maybe could be in a different meeting.
The water issue, the water pressure issue?
Yeah, that's like a different conversation. I understand it has to do with uh, what he's saying, that's why he was asking about the irrigation water, but I feel I got it off fast a little bit right now.
So I know we have just people that have, you know, brought concerns to me about the water thing. Everybody can say, we're ready for this amount of homes, this amount of homes, this amount of homes. All of us know how the water pressure is come this time of year, once everybody's running sprinklers and you know, out for the season and whatnot, and it's it's low. And we, with with this housing and whatnot, what's been approved, you know, we. You know, we don't know how, you know, they can say, oh, we're rated for seven hundred, so we can do forty, fifty more houses. We don't know until it does that, we can do test wells and test wells. And approve this, and then what if the Tesla doesn't come up, good, and then boom, we gotta dig another test well, but we got the apartments and the housing in. But no way to offer water to these people, you know, it's how do we get these test wells done first, probably should have been done first? To make sure that we're gonna have the water in these certain sections, that's gonna help this section here, these new apartments and housings back here, the stuff, you know. You know, wherever they decide to do new stuff, you know, it's a hundred percent. I'm a hundred percent for growth, you know, but like I said, we gotta, it's one of those, you gotta move slow to move fast, you know, it's. How do we get the, the ball rolling quicker with getting the wells tested? And getting the ground, if it's good, hey, sweet, we know we got water here.
Actually, Mr. Herrera, that doesn't concern you.
Well, yes, and, and not right now, like I've been, uh, I've been on this project for, for two years. And, uh, you know, this, uh, I don't, you know, this was more, uh, when I started the project, uh, to begin more information. It would have been something that I could have been like, well, you know, let's work on this to get here, but now I've been. The process of the city has been delayed a lot, in my case. And other cases that I know that because of staff issues and other issues that have arisen, and. You know, it's like, you know, I'm, you know, I've been waiting patiently also.
So you're ready to go.
Yeah, like, I've been like, you know, trying to move forward with my project.
Yeah, because we don't want you to be out the money too, because the else says, we do all this, and then boom, we don't have the water, then what? You build the houses and nobody buys them, they don't have any water.
I understand that, but I'm also not building all of them at the same time.
No, I, I get that.
And, and that's something that could be seen as we start building, it's like, okay, our system is not holding up. With two or four more houses that we've done, so let's, you know, let's hold on building and figure out something out. Or, you know, stop building until we could solve these issues.
And, and one of the requirements for issuing building permits is. Building permits for homes wouldn't be issued, so that's shown.
Yeah, and we wouldn't know, like, you guys said, you guys don't, you know, don't know if they're a, a holder or not.
And, and the water system is, um, first come, first served with those connections. So even though the Jano's Paradise subdivision has already been approved, if that development doesn't happen. Mister Herrera moves forward with his, and he starts building first, he would be first in line, it doesn't matter the order of the subdivision, it's the connections to the water system.
Supposedly, at the corner of the old high school. There's a sub pump there for the sewer system. That's gonna have to get upgraded, because.
But we've been told, Ruben, that's, that's beside the point here on this. That's, that's another thing.
That should be handled by the city.
That's, that's, that's not anything.
Just a moment, I would like to make a comment on this. We're all trying to solve a problem that doesn't belong to us, and we're all speculating on pump pressure and hydrogen and water. Wells and so on and so forth. It's my opinion, and I think it's been demonstrated throughout the country that. Development is what. Causes infrastructure to happen, not the other way around. When there's more demonstrated need, there will be a response, now whether a state, federal, local, or whatever. The infrastructure will respond to the need, the development, you can't not spend money to make more. And by not developing, no one, the small towns are not gonna go out and spend hundreds of thousands of dollars. On infrastructure with nothing to do with it. But if you get enough people out there, you're gonna build new schools, you're gonna drill new wells, you're gonna do whatever. That's the way towns grow. And no, it's not the easy way, we all like to live in a guaranteed world, where we want the cart before the horse, we want lots of perfect water. Before we allow new houses, but it doesn't work that way unfortunately. Now, whether or not these houses sell is his problem. He's the one that invested money, and if he builds thirty houses and nobody comes, shame on him. But that's not our problem. Okay, our problem is we want water, I've been here for almost thirty years, I haven't seen a great deal of improvement on our water. If we want to have more water, we need to develop and expand. And when towns around us did that, whether it's port districts or whatever. I did the same thing in the west side, I did the same thing in the south. And the development is what drives the infrastructure. And when you get enough people out there making enough noise, I guarantee you, somebody will step up. And it doesn't have to be the mayor or the county or the state or whatever, we don't know what the answer is, we shouldn't be trying to solve that problem. Somebody will meet the need, that's what I'm trying to say, is we need to look at it in that regard. And so should we hold back? No, right now, we need a new high school in Macton to build one. But development means revenue, revenue, money means infrastructure. You can't have it the other way around, and I'd like, I understand Ruben's problem. I like to feel safe and know we got lots of water, so we can build a few new houses, but normally works the other way around. The demand drives infrastructure. Anyway, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's move on to the, to public hearing on the, uh, foresight rezone.
Well, where, where are we at with my project, is it moving forward, or I didn't hear no motion?
Well, we, we've gotta go through all of the, the process in our agenda before we can.
We can't vote only for them at the time.
Oh, I guess, I guess we could.
No, we can't, we could.
Uh, do I hear a motion on?
I make a motion to approve, approve this.
New Beginning subdivision. Do I hear a second? Does move the second that, that we, uh, approve the New Beginning subdivision? All of you say aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passed.
The next step is, uh, grants.
Yes, the city council's next step. They've gotta approve or disprove what we recommend. Okay, on the foresight result, either one of you gentlemen have anything to say before we?
Should I go here?
You?
Just go to the point if you like. I like it better.
There is it possible to run that? Sure, most of you are familiar with the site, but I did take a video for you to watch, I would, I'd make a brief presentation. So on behalf of. The property owner and Mister Ruiz, who is my client. We've applied to rezone the eight point one-six acre parcel. Behind the elementary school that you see here. From R one to R two. Primary purpose of that zone change request is to increase residential densities. The uses perma- permitted in R one and R two are identical, I believe. So you wouldn't get, um. A different use than you can currently have, you would just get a little bit higher density residential development. Uh, although this is a non-project action before you, so you're, um, voting to. Approve or deny the rezone just based on the merits of the rezone itself and not a future project. Um, I believe Mister Ruiz does intend to divide the property into a handful of lots. And to then build multifamily structures on that. You can call it apartments, but, uh, not a huge apartment complex by any means.
So you're just asking this evening for a rezone? Or are you asking permission to move on with the project?
Uh, before you tonight is, is a request to take action and recommend on the rezone from R one to R two only. As a standalone. Actions.
And all that does is. Permit you to have a higher density.
Yeah, higher residential density. You're not gonna get any, anything different than you would right now.
I make a motion to approve this request.
Motion's been approved that we changed the foresight rezone from R one to R two. Do I have a second? Motion been moved seconded? Any questions, statements? Okay, well, all in favor, say aye? Okay, motion passed. Similarly, there'll be a council.
Yeah, um. Jerry?
Yes.
One, one or council teams, this, is it Tuesday's?
Yeah, there's Tuesday the second and the fourth Tuesday of the month.
So I'm not sure which date.
We can have from now. It'd be two weeks from Tuesday, from this past Tuesday.
It'll depend, I'll speak with the city clerk and see what we have on the agenda and what's taking precedent at the moment. We should have. They will inform me once we have it later.
Yeah, can I request a direct notification of the meeting?
Any other questions or comments? Ruben? Who else, you know? This gentleman right here, which one?
He's with me.
He's with you.
Okay, okay.
Any other questions? In chairman, yeah, uh, what would be? Thank you.
Thank you, Greg, uh, you might want to note that the notes for the agenda. Call Thursday, May fourteenth, it is May fifteenth.
Yeah.
Just a tiny detail, no big deal.
I know, but we'll get it, thank you.
You're welcome, bye-bye.
Have a good one.
You too. Yes, I am, getting stronger, thank you so much for asking.
You know, thank you, thank you for listening.
All right, bye-bye.